Good evening, welcome to our October 25th appointment. It's better. We begin with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of solemnness. It is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, just need to begin with local housekeeping. Those of you in the event of emergency, you can exit out either to the side or the front. You can cross the street at the municipal administration building and wait for fresh. Next item, more housekeeping. We are live streaming as well, so we would be taking outside participation. At home through Zoom, but back to your group. If you're in by phone, star nine will indicate a question, star six will allow you to view. If you're participating remotely or in person tonight, if you call the podium, please. Add us to the town clerk. We will begin.
Ms. Abbott?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Catson?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Iger?
Here.
Well, President's executive summary, prior to our meeting tonight, an executive session was settled under Brown General Law, forty-two, six, five, eight, two. Petition, period versus town enforcement, no votes were taken. Two hours. And if the bill was. Approved to accept this business. Approved, sorry, approved this second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, five to zero. Next, we have.
Six to zero.
Six to zero. So we sit again, order of license. President, attempt to obtain the license. This president, by force of his own, does he just object with the police chief? Everything's okay. President moved to the council. I met with Mr. Bryant on Friday, was satisfied with the other majesty has a police. Gee. Second, all those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger? I'm keeping you guys on your toes.
Motion passes, six to zero.
President, Mr. Bryant does have his hand.
He's in jeopardy now. Already proved it. This is Bryant.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to be here in case you had. But I see you've approved it, so I thank you very much.
But I've changed.
Start our old sentence.
I guess we change the sentence back where we usually have.
Hello?
Okay, Mr. Bryant?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bryant.
Yes, I just wanted to be here to answer any questions, but I see you've approved my request, so I appreciate it, and that's really it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Love to do business.
Thank you very much.
To do that.
So motion to.
Motion to your. Motion to your. All of you there?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. Next item is minutes from our October twelve meeting. Most to approve, this is second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. Next, we have tax vouchers. Tax voucher twenty twenty-one, ten twenty-five, dash four one. Motion to approve, second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. Moving on to our town administration board. Please, this president, town council, ladies and gentlemen. Sadly, as reported, Grace Timm in past play last week. Grace, as well known, accomplished questioner life, and many here will remember her as a founding member and former chair of the park committee. In two thousand sixteen, she was awarded the enforcement award for her years of selfless dedication to park and our town. I'm sure she will be so impressed. National Grid will file a supplemental petition with the energy facility citing board, the EFSB, in early two thousand twenty-two. A stakeholder update was provided to the National Grid Quinique Advisory earlier this month, which outlines their anticipated long-term approach to the natural gas capacity extremes vulnerabilities on Quinique Island. National Grid has accepted my invitation to provide their update to the town council, and they will do so at the November eighth council meeting. With respect to the COVID vaccine for fifteen to eighteen-year-olds, we anticipate that that vaccine for children in that age group will soon be authorized. When that occurs, we expect it to roll down with Department of Health, who work with the school departments, provide vaccinations likely to occur in mid-November. Five to eleven. I'm sorry. Did I hear it wrong?
No.
No, you heard right.
Okay. Five to eleven.
Five to eleven.
Five to eleven. Five to eleven. I'm sorry about that. The state expects to work with pediatricians, state-run sites, pharmacies, and schools to distribute vaccine. However, due to the complexities associated with conducting the COVID vaccination clinic for five to eleven-year-olds, and the ability of our staff and volunteers to handle the wide-ranging medical critical issues that we expect to arise during that kind of clinic, this will not be a clinic that will be run by town staff. Additionally, last week, we were notified that the Bureau of Justice Assistance has awarded enforcement nine thousand five hundred dollars through the tactic of Patrick Lady Bulletproof Best Partnership. These funds will be used by the police department to augment our bulletproof best maintenance and page replacement program. And then lastly, one additional thing, we were informed today that the enforcement police department is being awarded a simulated impaired driving experience teaching tool by the Newport County Prevention Coalition. This tool is a behind-the-wheel driving experience that makes the dangers of impaired driving real during a simulated experience on a custom-built electric car. The simulation unit will be used to educate youth during hands-on experience about the dangers of driving under the influence, as well as the dangers of distracted driving. The total cost of the simulation unit is valued at thirty-eight thousand fifty-three dollars and includes an enclosed trailer for the unit, as well as thirty months of maintenance. There will be no cost to the town for this grant. Mr. President, there concludes our vote. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Moving on to the removals, presentation appointments. First item, removal of south beach site committee. Question.
Mr. President, I'd like to table this purely because it doesn't say in the communication that it was actually voted on by the committee. Clearly states it was discussed, so I'd like to table this.
They discussed under this general agreement that this topic. And our meeting. That the solid waste was.
Did they take an action? And was it on their agenda?
No, it was announced by the chairman with general agreement to the president. I don't know if they, as I recall, they did not probably take a vote, but this vice adjutant has been attending a meeting, the committee, over almost two years. So it seems that in fact, the motion was on.
Okay. Well, with that information, I feel, well, but also one of the steps is to contact. The person.
Yeah, they definitely talked.
I would draw my motion to.
That's not to do stuff under the table. Kind of the opposite. Of motion to approve the rule of law. Second, pay their first terms. Do we motion second? All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. Next, we have appointments. We have an appointment for the Quinique Island Planning Commission. The finish-up term expires on six twenty-two. The applicant is Steve Johnson. Approve, approve, this is just. Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. And make a reappointment for the economic development committee, which is great. Approve, approve. Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. And we also have a reappointment to the housing board, to carry count. Approve, approve. Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. First item, you want to report any more to the county.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council members. I just wanted to come before you one more time prior to our upcoming election on November second. And if there are any remaining questions. So this evening, I would just read a brief letter to the editor that I submitted should be running in local publications this week. On behalf of the school department. We are grateful to the residents of Portsmouth who have taken the time to learn about the school facilities bond referendum. Voters will consider on Tuesday, November second. Question one asks residents to support investment in all four public school buildings to protect the health and safety of our students and staff. We have proposed investments totaling twenty-one point four million dollars for critical projects such as indoor air quality, accessibility, bathroom renovations, asbestos removal, roof replacement, and traffic and pedestrian safety. If the bond referendum is successful, we will seize a brief and rare opportunity to receive forty percent reimbursement from the state specifically for school facility improvements, reducing Portsmouth's share of the cost by twelve eight point six million dollars. I extend my personal thank you to the district building committee, our partners in town government, and others who have worked tirelessly to design a fiscally responsible plan that provides our students, families, and staff with the safe, healthy learning environments they deserve. Please vote on November second, if you have not done so already, to let your voice be heard in this important decision about the future of Portsmouth. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions to come? Thank you.
Okay. Next item, your monthly financial.
Council. As of the end of August, the town is now two months or sixteen point six seven percent into this year, twenty-nine to. Your date general fund revenues are at twenty-two percent of the total budgeted revenues, related to yearly transfer fees is trending higher than budget. The rate is increasing effective January first, twenty twenty-two, to include an additional tax on sales rate of eight hundred thousand dollars. As a result, the projected revenue has been adjusted to seven hundred thousand from five hundred thousand. The ambulance revenue, on the other hand, is trending lower than budget. This is due to the emergency room visits for non-credible services declining due to COVID. The projected budget for these services has been adjusted downward to six hundred and twenty-five thousand from seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. Your date general fund expenditures is at sixteen percent of budgeted expenditures, which is right across the budget. Insurance premiums came in over budget for a high approximately thirty thousand. And the projected budget for finance for less than this increase. Increase in premiums is offset by the net increase in projected revenues for transactions.
Motion, we see the place. Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. Moving on to new business. First item is a request to amend the two thousand fourteen resolution. Providing this increase in municipal funds. Planning commission board will outbid her three-year term. We have.
Yeah. Paco Macho here, pretending.
Hello?
Hold on one second, Miss March.
Okay.
Let me to elevate him to a panelist.
Yes.
Okay. Joining. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we got you. We were just trying to get you elevated instead.
Okay, great, excellent, appreciate that. Okay, great, okay, members of the town council, thank you very much for, first off, appointing Mr. Stephen Johnson earlier in the day. We greatly appreciate that. And despite mourning the loss of the late Keith Humphries, Mr. Johnson is going to be a great addition to the Quinique Island Planning Commission and for the town enforcement, so thank you for that. Moving on to the issue with the two thousand fourteen municipal appointments as, as written in your resolution. Our board, upon meeting and looking at the actual appointments, in particular for the town of Portsmouth, realized that we were going to have one appointment that was needed because of the passing away of Mr. Humphries, but we also had two open appointments, one with vacancy from Kathleen Wilson, whose term expired on June ninth of two thousand twenty-one, and Sarah Chergan, who will not be renewing because it is her second term, as of June ninth, two thousand twenty-two as well. So what we're looking at is an issue of continuity that in the next seven months, we do have three new faces for the board of directors, which is perfectly fine, but a question did come up because it is a little different than what the other two municipalities do. Portsmouth has made a decision to roll from June to June with at least one new appointment, and with Mr. Johnson, as of tonight, filling Mr. Humphries' former seat until June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, which is perfectly fine. It's well within your right, according to our bylaws, to do that. You have one hundred percent power and authority over who you appoint and when you appoint it, when you appoint such person. I would say that we will be looking to reappoint Mr. Johnson effective for a full three-year term come June, two thousand twenty-two. But it did raise the issue of having continuity. Relative to Dr. Wilson, her time at Rhode Island DOT with us and with your own planning board made her an indispensable part of the team. Unfortunately, I have to tell you tonight that Ms. Wilson can stay on until a new appointment is made by you, the town council, and she's perfectly willing to do that, to continue with continuity on the board, to make sure that you have four votes on the board at all times, but she will not be seeking a full third term. Now, so I guess that makes tonight kind of a moot point, but we wanted to be proactive on this because we will have three appointments in seven months, with a fourth appointment the following year when Mr. Bob Andrews comes off in two thousand twenty-three. And that would be the end of his second term, and he's another gentleman that we would actually like to maintain for continuity as well. So we just wanted to get your thoughts as members of the town council as to whether or not this would be something you are amenable to, or if you wanted to continue down the same path. Again, it's completely up to you. This board serves the town of Portsmouth. Your appointees are made directly by you, and we work for you, not against you, certainly.
Okay, so the question. Trying to track that. Are you concerned with the, the, the term limit of the two consecutive terms?
Yes, yes, sir, specifically the two consecutive terms.
Correct. And we're the only community that has that limitation, or Middletown and Newport do something different, correct?
Correct. Middletown and Newport both reserve the right to appoint for additional terms. Now, again, pursuant to our bylaws in the AI PC, we do not specify any term limit. To provide for turnover within the organization, we provide for three-year terms. Now, that's open to the individual town or city's interpretation of when they want to do that. The town of Portsmouth does it by June ninth of every year, so at least one rolls over on two thousand twenty-two, two appointments will roll over. The other two municipalities just do three years from the time of appointment itself. Again, we don't have any objection with rolling over year to year. Portsmouth is comfortable with that and likes that, that changeover. The biggest issue is just the third term. There is precedence. Both Middletown and Newport have appointed one member each to a third term, but it's not something that we certainly abuse on our end. It is an issue where we take into consideration the person's net asset to the organization and what they bring in as far as what the municipalities have us working on. So it really comes down to that, and the discretion certainly is with the councils. You don't have to automatically do it for a third term, and the way it's written is resolution here. We are limited to two terms, and by the way we read it, I'm not even sure if that's a non-consecutive with Portsmouth. There may be members who have served on this board in the past, but have hit their six-year mark, but have been off for a few years, who could possibly return. So we're not exactly clear on that as to the way the resolution is written as of two thousand fourteen.
I'm going to question.
Okay.
If, if they had a sentence in the council which removed the limited to the second, three-year terms, or we had a sentence to amend that, or extended at the place of council, that's what they counsel. I personally think some terms. Some continuity is a big, it's a huge asset.
Yes.
It, you know, he played. Since he is a principal. All careful. And I don't think by that word is any reason that she couldn't be appointed to follow year after year after that. Just as she shall be limited to. I read it one way, I'm sure other, or read it another way, saying, as if, if you're president, what's, twice around. I can common read, I think. Common reading, so it's just two consecutive terms, not said two consecutive terms. So we should sort of harmonize the resolution. For here, for the side of Christmas. To amend that, resolve the paragraph, we can say here terms. Unless, unless further approved by the council. But that still has a limitation. You have to come back. You could. You may create, basically, but additional terms would be approved by a super majority voter of the council. Two thirds. So it's not just a majority. So it would be five to two, and set for, for three. Six. So just an additional continuation here. Where it says generally limited to consecutive three-year terms unless approved by a super majority of council to add additional terms. I'm okay with it. If I make, I'm okay with the super majority, but I think spelled out as five. Because fractions, two-thirds is six. So, but technically a super majority tonight. Four. True. So if you spell out five, it's only four. Yeah. If you could avoid someone. Unless approved, unless otherwise. Unless otherwise approved. I agree. I'm for. More than a simple majority? Which means one. Same as you put. I'm just kidding. It's more than. Any higher. Right. So I'm okay with if we revise the language to say, unless otherwise approved by a something majority of the council, really, you know. Greater than, greater than a simple majority. Happy time. Approved by three years. Generally speaking, most appointments are. Yeah, that is correct. Last one that wasn't supposed to. I'm in H here, I can erase, so. My skills are limited. I'm sure, I'm sure. All this. All right, so the suggested modification to the, the further resolve paragraph. Meant as following two consecutive three-year terms, unless otherwise approved by a greater, by a greater than a simple majority of the council. The best. And when we get that. Make that a motion. Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Catson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes, six to zero. Thank you all.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next, it's just a review and assignment of the town council liaison decisions made by Mr. Buttermeyer. They would repositions parks and rents, school building committee, and West Side redevelopment. Boarding. Or commit. Aside. West Side Development, Vice. By. This. This president. I have in the past, certain cities, like West Side. We have seen that role, I picked that all back up. As to the parks and rent, decision that Mr. Buttermeyer was the agent. I understand that Kelly is quite important. Most of the areas. I happy to pick up Mr. Buttermeyer's workload. Mr. Kelly, sorry. This is a. I was taking on them. Has taken on exactly the mantle of fixing all of our parks.
And that is how he has been expressing an interest.
So he gets to the fish, I guess, that's right. School building committee. Hush is pretty much done. I'll see what happens.
So I'm not, I'm not aware of who else on council. I'm happy to pick up that workload unless somebody else.
Well, the question is, is the committee to continue on during the construction process?
I guess, while we're pending the move on Tuesday, we need to make one correction or another, so we'll be repeating some sort of committee.
We're still saying.
Happy to do that.
We don't, we don't need any votes, it's just. No, but the discussion, I had a request from. Next meeting, the economic development, maybe we'll like eight, nine years. I was for that. If we can't do it tonight, this is not. So if anybody wants to jump in here, let me know. I will, but I think I'll be trouble way too much. Actually, must be effective.
What's the means?
That the, the, she said. That's why you. I know, so I'll put down a agenda for next. Maybe right to add another. Excellent, thank you. Okay, so let's move to number three, request approval for extension of the Glen Mayor Health. Great, Mr. President, of course, with base contracts, the resident managers are allowed to one year extensions. The base contract ends at the end of December, they have opted to exercise. That portion of the contract allows them to extend for one year. We anticipate that this will be their last year, we've already started evaluating the request for information. And probably within the next month, we will issue a RFP. And we will discuss council guard two, what happens with Glen Manor House post. Katie, so for now, we're asking that you approve this one year extension. So we'll say that. All of them, favor?
Ms. Abbott? Hi, Mister Hamilton?
Hi.
Mister Captain?
Hi.
Mister Kelly?
Hi.
Doctor Ryan?
Hi.
Mister Aguirre?
Hi, motion passes six to zero. Just a couple of comments on the contract going forward, the council. A, I talked to Katie last week, it's a hundred and ten days.
Nice.
In part of our contract, we see three or six months of trade, of the replacement. So we need to start thinking. EQ, whatever you want, all right, out there, out there, so that we can get something, somebody. And equity on what, from this, from this, the third, fourth, largest representative generator. All right, next item is number four. Request for public hearing, proposed provisions, town project.
Anything is present in terms of council, appearing before you, once again. Adjust that very long inside of, it wasn't that long ago that we made some well needed updates. Through this last season, it's worked out very well, we did find a little stack. And so you have a draft copy for you, the main concern was section one twenty four dashboard regarding bonfires. We've got a couple of instances where they were rather large, so I want to try and limit this. I did not put a specific size in there purposely, why additions would be bonfire, shall be limited size based upon location, anticipate attendance, available access for fire. Size numbers will be determined by the fire chief or his or her designated name. I wanted to reserve sizing, it could come a day when the town wants to have a big ceremonial bonfire and it's going to be thirty feet by thirty feet. And it's in the proper location, has access, plans to meet, so I didn't want to limit it to a specific size. But if someone wants to have a bonfire, we're going to go off the location beforehand and determine what would be appropriate size. The second portion of the one twenty four dash six, under the open fire, we realized that we had setbacks. Denoted in the following section, contained burning, yet we didn't on open burn. So that is just to make the regulation more aligned, each section that if you're going to have an open burn on the property, you have to maintain a certain setback. From fences, property line, structures, and so forth. With the caveat, if you couldn't maintain that setback, you qualified a bomb, it will go off the spectrum if you didn't have fifty people yet, forty eight. And we looked at it and deemed it okay. So respectfully asking that you approve these changes to burn on this.
Yes, yes, this is just a question. I move we can prove this.
Second, policy and practice for a number of years, this can have, if you want to add in the paper for public hearing at any where this. It's not required by the charter, but by law, but that's, that's been the policy. We may have this. I think. Second meeting. So what you, second meeting. Thank you. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott? Hi, Mister Hamilton?
Hi.
Mister Captain?
Hi.
Mister Kelly?
Hey.
Doctor Ryan?
Hi.
Mister Aguirre?
Hi. Motion passes. All right, moving on to correspondence. Move to receive a place. Second, all those in favor?
Ms. Abbott? Hi, Mister Hamilton?
Hi.
Mister Captain?
Hi.
Mister Kelly?
Hi.
Doctor Ryan?
Hi.
Mister Aguirre?
Hi, motion passes six to zero. Future meetings, November eight, November twenty second, and December thirteen. President. Second. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott? Hi, Mister Hamilton?
Hi.
Mister Captain?
Hi.
Mister Kelly?
Hi.
Doctor Ryan?
Hi.
Mister Aguirre?
Hi, motion passes six to zero. Thank you all. We'll see you on the eighth.
Thank you.